Welcome to June 24, 2019, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shuldorff.
Here.
Henke.
Here.
Pagano. Parson.
Parson.
Sayam. Harris.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
I make a motion we suspend the rules. Second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes, have it. For Mr. Egan?
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
As everyone in this room knows, it's been a very, very difficult week in St. Louis County, in St. Louis region for law enforcement officers. Last Friday morning, I, I woke upon out that one of my officers that works for me has suffered, been ambushed and suffered two gunshot wounds to the leg. Fortunately, he has survived and, and will survive those wounds. He's home recuperating with his family. Yesterday afternoon, we were all shocked to hear the news that one of our comrades, Officer Michael Langsdorf of the North County Cooperative, Police Cooperative, suffered a fatal gunshot wound while he was serving the citizens of St. Louis County in the Walston area. Officer Langsdorf served our region for over seventeen years for the city of St. Louis and most recently for the North County Police Cooperative. He leaves behind fiance, parents, and two children. I ask you to join me for just a moment as we silently remember his service, we remember his family, and we pray for all involved. Thank you, Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Next item is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections, additions to the meeting minutes and executive meetings of June 10? Hearing done, Councilman Shuldorff moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Ayes, have it. Minutes are approved. Next item is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issues, not necessarily on the agenda for your three minutes. This is not a question and answer period. If you would like to speak to one of the council members or the mayor, please stay until after the meeting and we will get with you. If you are here to speak on a public hearing, please wait and speak when the public hearing is announced. Mr. Hessel.
Yes, if I can, Mr. President, members of the city council, as well as the residents. It's, I am not on Facebook, I'm not on social media, but I have been informed by a number of people that the contract with Gateway Disposal and my involvement in that process has been the subject of those communications, so I thought it might be worthwhile for me to lay it out in detail. I apologize in advance, this is sort of a long story, but let's go all the way back to the beginning, and I'm sure many of you will recall that prior to 2008, homeowners had the ability and the right to contract with waste haulers on their own. St. Louis County adopted legislation in 2008, actually, they adopted it prior to that, but it was subject to litigation, but finally in 2008, it was established that throughout St. Louis County and all municipalities within St. Louis County, that either St. Louis County or those municipalities would make a determination as to who the waste hauler would be, and it's been some time since I've read that legislation. I recall that it's not particularly clear, but it is my belief and understanding that there is an exclusive waste hauler for each and every municipality, as well as for the districts within St. Louis County. I will research that more carefully, but as I'll explain, it's really a moot point at this point in time, because in 2009, the city council, after going through an RFP process, selected Meridian Waste Hauling to be the exclusive hauler for the city of Florissant and all the residents of the city of Florissant. At that point in time, Meridian was owned and operated by Chuck Barkum. I had not met Chuck Barkum before, and as I'll explain, I really didn't meet Chuck Barkum until 2018. In any event, the city was satisfied and pleased with the service that was being provided by Meridian when it was owned by Chuck Barkum, and in July of 2017, the city renewed the exclusive agreement with Meridian and extended that agreement through March 31 of 2020, so March of next year, with two one-year options extending that arrangement, provided that both parties agreed and understood that the options were being exercised. I did have some conversations with Chuck Barkum during those discussions and negotiations, but nothing of any substance. In April of 2018, I was actually contacted by Mr. Barkum to represent him on matters totally unrelated to the city of Florissant, and I'm not sure who recommended him to me, but I accepted that representation. I notified then Mayor Schneider of this representation and indicated that there was no conflict with the city of Florissant, because these were matters that were totally unrelated to the city of Florissant. And as a matter of background, I hope that everyone understands that the city of Florissant is my favorite client, but they're not my only client. I'm, in private practice, I have a lot of clients. I'm at a law firm, has 160 lawyers within that law firm. We have conflicts every day, in which we have clients who may be interacting with other clients, and we have to address those conflict issues. I looked today, I had eighty-nine conflict issues that needed to be addressed just today. My point is that these happen frequently, it's not uncommon in my profession. I'm happy to say that fortunately I have people who want to hire me as their attorney, and I am surrounded by terrific lawyers, and as a result of that, conflicts develop. But when I was engaged by Mr. Barkum, there was no conflict of interest with the city of Florissant at all. Again, I can't emphasize, it had nothing to do with the city of Florissant. In late July, early August, the city council, members of the city council, expressed great frustration with the services that was being provided by Meridian at that point in time. In fact, I looked at an email today in which one of the council members related that there was no pickup for thirteen days, and that Meridian had failed to deliver the trash cans that, they had trash carts that had been promised, and this council member was very frustrated on behalf of his residents, understandably, because they were paying for substandard service. He informed the city council of that situation, and the email instructs me to begin evaluating a legal process for terminating the agreement with Meridian. That was in August of 2018. On August 10 of 2018, I provided the city council with legal advice about the termination of that contract, pointing out to the city council that this is not an easy process, that we obviously have to consider the implications and consequences of a termination upon, of course, the citizens and the residents of the city of Florissant, from a performance standpoint and from a cost standpoint. And I also advised the city council at that point in time of my representation of Chuck Barkum on totally unrelated matters, because Mr. Barkum was still associated with Meridian at that point in time. On August 13, the mayor and city council, along with myself, met with Meridian at a closed session, and I advised Meridian, the city council members advised the Meridian of their frustration, and I advised Meridian that Meridian was in breach of the contract, and the city had every right to terminate that contract, and was not waiving their right to terminate that contract by not doing so at that point in time. On September 24 of 2018, Derek Stanley of Meridian appeared before the city council to discuss various recycling issues. The council members pointed out again complaints about service, and I again publicly advised Meridian of our legal position, which was that they were in breach of the contract, the city had every right to terminate that contract immediately under the terms of the contract, and they were not waiving that right by not exercising that right at that point in time. In November of 2018, I was asked to provide legal services to Mr. Barkum and two other individuals who wanted to form an LLC called Gateway Disposal LLC, to engage in hauling services, again, totally unrelated to the city of Florissant. In fact, I recall contacting the city of Washington on their behalf, and other than the formation of that and some other matters, I did provide legal services to Gateway Disposal. If you check with the Secretary of State, I am the registered agent. We typically do that as a service for clients, where I serve as a registered agent. But other than serving as a registered agent and providing legal advice, I have no relationship with Gateway Disposal. And as we will talk in a minute, Gateway Disposal did become involved with the city of Florissant, but that was a result, because continuing in 2018 and 2019, there were numerous email and discussions related to the complaints associated with the Meridian contract. In fact, I was reminded this evening of, of a meeting that took place in early December, and certain people, Mr. Sayam in particular, was dressed in his Christmas garb, and he had some very harsh words with Meridian. It was somewhat humorous, but the message was obviously not humorous. It was very pointed, and again, the complication was that there was inadequate service that was being provided by Meridian. We had other meetings, the city council and I had other meetings discussing the implications of the termination of the agreement, and then on May the 28th, we had a closed executive session in which, for the first time, the city council had made that very difficult decision about exploring the option and whether or not it would be possible to terminate the agreement with Meridian and assign that agreement to a third party. And when you assign a contract, that means that that third party has to take over that contract under precisely the same terms and conditions, or you have to issue an RFP and go out and seek proposals, which was certainly discussed by the city council. The problem with seeking an RFP prior to the termination of the contract by its normal contractual terms is that's about either a sixty to a ninety-day process, and of course, the issue becomes, are the residents of the city of Florissant going to receive better or worse service while you're going through an RFP process, knowing that the current hauler is not going to be selected? Other cities have dealt with that, I've spoken with other city attorneys that have dealt with it, that is not a good situation to be in. So the city council made the decision to authorize me to contact three different haulers, at least three haulers, to determine whether or not it was possible to have a third-party hauler come in and assume that contract. I contacted Chuck Barkum with Gateway Disposal on May the 29th, the very next day, and made it abundantly clear to him that my contact was on behalf of the city of Florissant, and as a result of that, I could no longer represent him or Gateway Disposal in that process, and provided him with that information, and sent an email to Gateway Disposal identifying the terms and conditions that were being required by the city council, which were in essence to assume the contract under precisely the same terms that they existed today, to try to determine whether or not they could assume that contract and provide services by July 1, a very short period of time admittedly, and that they were obligated to maintain confidentiality with respect to that, because we did not want Meridian to become involved in the process while we were exploring the option to terminate Meridian. I also contacted the attorney for Waste Connections, a gentleman who I've known for a long time. I was not able to reach him, although I left three voicemail messages and an email until Friday, May 31, and sent an email to him with precisely the same information, laying out the same terms and conditions. Thanks to Councilmember Pagano, I was then able to reach out to Republic. I did not have contact information prior to Ms. Pagano providing that to me, and I laid out to Republic precisely the same terms and conditions. I had numerous discussions with representatives of Republic, representatives of Waste Connections, representative of Gateway Disposal, about all of the logistical issues, as well as the legal issues associated with the assignment of the contract, and reported back to the city council on June 10 that Gateway Disposal had agreed to accept the assignment under precisely the same terms and conditions and could start providing services on July 1. It was indicated there were some issues associated with the trash carts, that it could take five to seven weeks for delivery of those trash carts, but they were going to do everything we can to accelerate this delivery time. Gateway will also be open to and prepared to purchase existing Meridian carts and have stickers printed and have those stickers placed upon and over the Meridian logo. I also had discussions with representatives of Gateway, and if they didn't have those carts, it would agree that they would pick up the trash, whether it be in bags or whatever containers were available, but they would pick up the trash as quickly as possible, excuse me, would pick up the trash accordingly and would get the carts as quickly as possible. Republic indicated in a letter dated June 10 that we are not able to accept assignment of current agreement under the same terms and conditions, now without certain verification of information. They then went on to indicate that they would want to renegotiate price and renegotiate the terms of the contract. I didn't receive anything in writing, but I had several conversations with the attorney for Waste Connections, and he similarly indicated that although they were very much interested, they could not take an assignment of the contract, and July 1 was not doable, they could not keep the rates at the, as provided for under the agreement. They did indicate that they would keep the rates until December 31 of this year and start new rates as of January 1 of 2020, and they needed to extend the term of the contract for five years. I advised the city council that once you change principal terms, particularly price, particularly the length of the contract, that you really could not proceed with an assignment, so the options for the city council was either to accept the proposal from Gateway or to issue an RFP, or, the third option of course, is to wait until March 31 and terminate the agreement under the terms of the contract at that point in time. As everyone is now aware, the city council authorized me to proceed with the drafting of an assignment and assumption agreement with Gateway Disposal, which we have done, and that is obviously the matter that's on the council agenda this evening. In the meantime, I have to report, and we should all give great thanks to Mayor Lowry, he has reached out to Meridian, and Meridian thankfully has been cooperative with the mayor and with the city council. They have provided to the city the list of all of the customers, they are working, it's my understanding, they are working with Gateway with respect to the trash carts, and they're also working with the city, so that those residents who have paid for the trash services, which paid Meridian for trash services, that they will not be providing in July, August, and September, they will be proceeding, I believe it's as of July 1, with a refund, or at least initiating the refund policy. In so doing, we've also explained to Gateway that those customers who haven't received their refund, we fully anticipate that those residents won't be paying until they do receive their refund, so that no one has to pay a bill twice. I think that, that I've tried to address, well, let me add one other comment, and I believe that representatives of Gateway are here, and I want to make it abundantly clear to them and to everybody on the city council, and the administrative staff, as well as the residents, I represent the city of Florissant. All of my ethical duties, duties of loyalty, are clearly to the city of Florissant, and to the extent that Gateway, God, it won't, God forbid that it happens, but if they fail to perform the contract, I can assure you, I will not hesitate to take whatever legal action is necessary in order to enforce the rights of the city of Florissant against Gateway or anybody else who breaches their agreement with the city of Florissant. So, I think I've made it abundantly clear to everyone that as a result of this process, I've lost a client, which happens, that those are things that happen when conflicts develop. We all move on. I am not representing Gateway, and I'm not representing Mr. Barkum any longer, because I can't, I'm representing the city of Florissant, who I've, which I've proudly done for the last forty years. So hopefully I have addressed all of the questions, if the city council has any questions, and hopefully addressed in advance some of the questions that the residents have. If not, I'm prepared to answer any questions we have.
Thank you, Ms. Hessel. Don Adams. Could I please state your name and address for the record, please?
Don Adams, I live in Florissant, Missouri. First that you just brought up about Meridian, if we choose to go ahead and pay our bill to Gateway, is that going to affect Meridian giving us back our money?
No, sir. We'll still get your refund. Absolutely, Don.
The next issue is, I know this council has had their hands tied with many issues from the previous administration, and if this is any indication of how Mayor Lowry gets things done, this city is going to be a very exciting place to live, and I thank all of yous for getting this done in a very timely manner. And the last thing I want to talk to you about, and I'm ignorant on this, so I don't know, if the city has a policy or a plan in place where city employees all take responsibility for the city of Florissant, meaning if they see something's wrong, they write it down and they turn it in to whoever, if they get some kind of compensation back. If not, I think we should have some kind of policy in place like that. Excuse me, I had the privilege, I guess, of finding out a code enforcer lives on Lindsay Lane, okay? I never knew this, I don't know how long he's lived there. Tonight, on the way over, I saw at least six violations with the grass, and I'm willing to bet Jeff's pay one day, because I can't afford to bet my pay, that none of those violations are turned in, and whether you're the guy that cleans up after we leave here tonight, or whether you're the council, I'm sure if something is seen, it should, it's written down and turned in, and to give people an incentive in other departments, maybe give them some kind of compensation, a lunch certificate, a couple hours off, something of this nature, to encourage them to take part in being responsible for the city of Florissant. I try to do my part, my wife tries to do her part, we're very proactive for Florissant and the police, and we're just very excited about Mayor Lowry taking over and you guys working with the mayor and getting things done. I thank you, Mayor, I thank you, council.
Thank you, Don. Linda Jones.
Mayor and council, this is my colleague Jeff.
Can you state your name?
I'm sorry, Linda Jones.
For the record, please.
Number two, Andy Runn, Belleville, Illinois, 62223.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Thanks for letting us speak. Jeff is one of my colleagues, we turned into separate cards, but Mr. Hessel answered some questions for us, so we don't need to take up more time than, than, than really what we want to, what we want to speak. So, again, my name is Linda Jones, I am the municipal marketing rep for Waste Connections of Missouri. We represent over, we have, we service over seventy-eight thousand residents in the state of Missouri, we're the third largest hauler in North America. We service communities such as Rock Hill, Eureka, DePere, Crestwood, Taking Over Wildwood, and just three of the eight districts, so very, very experienced company. The questions that we want to put out there, we know it's not question and answer, so I'm not expecting the answers today, is in reference to Bill 9505. Number one, we would like to know why Waste Connections did not receive direct communication, verbal or written, about this opportunity. Additionally, I am on your bid contact list, I've spoken to the city clerk and with several other people over the last three years, have emailed to make sure that if any sort of communication that goes out about bid opportunities or anything else when it comes to the waste and recycling services, that I would be notified. Secondly, we would like to obtain the official solicitation, I can't say that word, that was sent to the three haulers. We would like to, to see what, what that looks like. And third, we would like to receive a copy of the three proposals that were received from the haulers, again, to, to, as, you know, having the fair opportunity to see, to service your great city. Pretty much in closing, we have a lot of employees, family members and friends that live in your community, and we just felt it was our responsibility to bring these questions to, to the council and to mayor, so. Jeff, do you have anything you want to add?
No. Jeff Stewart, Bridge, Missouri. Mr. Hessel answered a lot of my questions pertaining to timeline and ramp up that was going to need to take place for this to happen, so Linda addressed all of our, all of our issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Englemaier. Hi, John. State your name and address for record, please.
Good evening, John Englemaier, 1281 Graham Road, Florissant. Many things have happened since last November of 2018, when the last time I attended a budget work session and council meeting. The new budget year began December 1 of 2018. The new year began January 1 of 2019, Happy New Year related. Lecture process happened in April. Congratulations to you, Mr. Timothy J. Lowry, proud to call you mayor on your new elected position and title. The Valley of Flowers happened, the parade I heard was great, as usual, by the Valley of Flowers Committee. Summer began last week, June 21 of 19, and I'm very much alive despite what many thought of it was gone. As a personal note to the council, Jackie Pagano, for her efforts to assist me concerning us, shed permit. Thank you for your time this evening. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jeff. Robert Smith.
Robert Smith, 2823 Chapelview. First thing I want to say is, thank you for getting those updates for the monthly budget, we're up to April. I still have questions on the audit that the city does need to do for our finance I still have questions on the audit that the city does need to do for our financial for 2018. I wasn't able to make, wasn't in town for last month, the last council meeting, and I do have questions, so I will be sending those, I guess, through the email for Karen in regards to some of these monies that are being exchanged on the budget, as far as moving around into different accounts, because I do have questions about that because of the set budget that we, that you guys signed into last year. The other question that I would like to get an answer to, and like I said, I'll be sending an email, is about the adult daycare. I just never seemed to got, looked at the video from last council session, and it never really gave a definitive answer as to where the research came from and where the decision was made, from what information that they had. So it's kind of, I would like to get a definitive answer as to why the ban is going into play, or the ban is trying to be voted into place, and where that research was from for planning and zoning to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next item is communication.
Email dated June 16, 2019, from Matt Sanders regarding Meridian Waste.
Next item is public hearing, number 1906013.
Notice this hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Florissant City Code. Zoning ordinance has amended that a public hearing will be held by the city council, the city of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, and the council chambers at 9:55, Ruis Saint Francois, on Monday, June 24th, 2019, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition, to issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 6669, as amended, to allow for a new clothing store with exterior changes for the property located at 13995 New Hall's Ferry Road. Citizens in party of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or 2395142.
Brian Nass, petitioner.
Brian Nass, the architect with Casco R5.
State your name and address for the record, please.
12 Sunan Drive, Suite 100, St. Louis, Missouri.
Thank you. You have the floor.
I am here to try and get through a proposed Ross that is going to go into the old bookstore that I believe has been vacant for five years. In terms of, in terms of the exterior modifications on the front, Ross is proposing to leave all of the existing storefront glazing. They are going to provide a film because on the inside will be a sales wall, so we're going to keep all the glazing. Plan and zoning has agreed to allow Ross to go with their prototypical type auto slider storefront doors. They also approved the removal in this area here and this area. There is a false window. They agreed to allow us to remove that and provide EFS to match the existing adjacent surface. The additional exterior work is for a new loading dock and trash compactor enclosure. After going back and forth several types of directions with plan and zoning, they had agreed upon the location for this, where it would be, have a less impact on the traffic that is coming through. Also, with plan and zoning recommendations, we are to use self-closing and self-latching gates to make sure that the dumpster area stays closed. We also are going to provide a man, individual man gate that is self-closing and self-latching as well. As you can see by the plan, now that we are just, we're no longer impeding the...
You can take that off of there if you want.
You can take that off, sir.
Thank you. The loading dock area is going to be right back here. The vehicle will come in through the back area here and pull forward and back up, and then on leaving, based off of the existing site plan, this will now become the full path of travel on coming out as well. The existing asphalt was already designed for heavy traffic, based off of the existing civil drawings when the shopping center was created. The view at the front, pulling in off of the street and coming through, we're no longer tearing down any of the curbing. We did, to get some additional landscaping, as well as making sure that the compactor was completely screened. Back on the exterior elevation, these were the two windows, false windows, that were agreed to be removed for the EFS. And as you can see, a lot of the exterior elements are staying the same for them.
Mr. Sayem.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to thank you and Ross actually for investing in our city. I think it's great that you guys are coming here, because like, we were talking outside for a minute, and like you remembered, it has been empty for five years, so I think it's great that somebody's moving in finally and making use of that space and helping our local economy and everything. I did have a few questions, like what we talked about outside. I was concerned about preserving like the general character of the shopping center. I did, and I also wanted to, you kind of explained a little bit, but you said the letters had to be big enough that the, you know, that you could see them from New Hall's Ferry, right? And you calculated that and everything, but that they were not so big that they would be tacky or anything like that. So I, we just wanted to make sure of that. And I want, I also wanted to ask if you could, if, I'm sorry, if the Ross at Clock Tower Plaza, is this affected? Are they affected in any way? I mean, are they going to stay open so we have two stores in the same area or anything like that?
I cannot speak for any other of the Ross stores. I'm the architect for this particular one. I don't get into the business side of Ross.
Okay.
I do know that they have built stores close together without closing the other store and without it really impacting...
So they don't, so that one wouldn't impact this one then, or anything like that, or it shouldn't?
No. Their business marketing team, I am sure, has really looked into that.
Okay, and just, do you know what the timetable would be for the construction and the opening and everything?
Currently, right now, if we get your blessing tonight to move forward, we would approximately need eight weeks to do our construction documents before we can issue them for plan review. At the time of issuing for plan review, the building owner slash contractors, they will be also submitting it out for bid. Normally, their bid process is roughly between three to five weeks long, so by the time that the plan review is completed, a contractor will already be on board. They approximately need sixty days to set up camp to start construction. With this type of work, this project should not last no more than seven to eight months total construction.
Okay.
Especially if it's dry weather like it's been in St. Louis lately.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Sayem. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Nass. I just have a couple questions. I know you showed one picture, and I have it here, in regards to where the loading zone would be, and I just want to make sure that I've got everything straight here. This is like the view from Lindbergh. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do I have that? Okay, all right. So is it just going to be trash that's going to be delivered here? Are you guys loading and delivering the supplies from...
The delivery truck will be backing up into that loading dock area. Correct.
Because my concern is, is that, because there would be eighteen-wheelers that would be coming through here, right, to deliver inventory?
There will be an eighteen-wheeler that will be coming from the backside of the building, from Lindbergh, pulling forward and then backing up into that. Correct.
Okay, so they'd be coming from this direction and not trying to make this turn?
No, they will not. No.
So that was my concern. There's not much room.
No, there is not.
Probably no room for an eighteen-wheeler to even do anything like that.
Correct. They'll be coming from the back portion of that drive aisle parking lot in the far back, and they'll just come forward.
If you can just kind of explain on there.
Yes, I can.
So I don't know if everybody can see this, but... Yeah, I think you just passed the picture. Oh, okay, that's fine, too. That's fine.
Okay. Where the truck route is coming in here, they will be coming forward, and then they'll just be backing up into this, right into the loading dock. Once they leave, they will pull, they'll pull forward and go all straight, all the way out, straight through.
Okay.
The turning radiuses and all of that have been verified to do this type of route without any complications.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Mr. Shuldoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. My questions were answered.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldoff. Mr. Jones.
Yes, your compactor and your trash enclosure are two different things?
Trash enclosure, trash compactor is, it's the same thing.
Same thing, okay. Oh, you said something about the door latch on it?
Yes. The drawings that you have currently will show that there is a single man door that has a self-closing mechanism to make sure that the gates stay closed and not open, and they will also, when they close, they will self-latch.
Great. Fantastic. That's something we're looking at for other enclosures in our city, but thank you very much for that. And like I said, I think it's already been said here, welcome to our city. We're glad you're here and investing in us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, Brian, could you go back to that one print of the loading dock in there and your...
The rendering or the plan view?
The loading dock that you're hit right there, right, this one right there.
Okay.
You're saying your vehicles are going to come around there, pull up here, and then back into your docks?
Yes, they are going to pull into here, pull forward, and then back in. Correct.
Now, where their docks are going, how much room do you have when you're pulling up here to start backing up? Are you going to impede any of traffic down here?
There will be a little impeding traffic, however, at the time of the deliveries, a lot of the stores should be closing about that time.
You'd be at night mostly all your deliveries?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if you had any kind of deliveries during the day, you will be impeding on traffic because there's your Lindbergh, and there's a right-hand turn lane coming into there off of Lindbergh to go into the shopping center.
Yes, that is correct.
So if you have any daytime deliveries, you're going to have to probably impede some traffic for a little bit for that driver to back up, correct?
For a few minutes if there was daytime deliveries.
Okay. So most of all your deliveries will be doing, are be going on at night?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sayem.
Thank you again. Just as a follow-up question to all of the delivery questions, did I understand correctly that you earlier said when the deliveries are done, the truck is going to leave and go towards New Hall's Ferry and turn right from there to leave the shopping center?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and you verified that turn radius as well, that you wouldn't run into the concrete island or anything like that? It seems kind of big, but...
Yes, we did. And we also, and we also verified the construction for the asphalt paving all the way through as to where an eighteen-wheeler will not damage any of the existing pavement or curbs.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Sayem. Yeah, Brian, do you have a contractor list? Do you do out-of-town contractors? Do you use local contractors for your projects?
To answer your first question, no, I do not have a contractor's list. That would be taken up with by CBRE, who is the building owner. There, we had spoke about union work, and as I explained to Mr. Jones, that that information will be passed along. I am fairly certain that with a national account vendor such as Ross and as CBRE is in the community, they know that the local contractors that they hire will be, will need to be unioned, and that information will be passed along as I spoke to Mr. Jones about.
Good, good, yeah, because we are a very, very good labor-friendly community here, and it'd be nice to use local contractors with the, signatory with the building trades. Thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing? Hearing done. Councilmen?
Hello.
All right, Kevin. Sorry, Kev.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Rain. I just want to make sure that it's clear to the person or the company coming in that deliveries cannot be made between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, according to city ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Seeing no other comments, Mr. Sayem moves to close this public hearing, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Next item is bills for a second reading under Old Business. Bill number 9496. Councilman Sayem moves for a second reading, second by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to approve an amendment to special use permit number 8376 to allow for the expansion of a barbecue restaurant with outdoor cooking for the property located 1752, 1754 North Florissant Road.
Councilman Hinky moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to approve an amendment to special use permit number 8376 to allow for the expansion of a barbecue restaurant, restaurant with outdoor cooking for the property located 1753 through 1754 North Florissant Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9496 passes and becomes ordinance 8517. Bill number 9497. I'll move for a second reading, second by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance amending Title IV, Section 405-035 definitions, and Title VI, Section 605-380 definitions by amending the definition of adult daycare to prohibit adult daycare centers and shopping centers.
Councilman Hinky moves for a third reading, second by Ms. Pagano. Councilman Hinky moves for a third reading, second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance amending Title IV, Section 405, 035, definitions, and Title VI, Section 605, 380, definitions by amending the definition of adult daycare to prohibit adult daycare centers and shopping centers.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
No.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill Number 9497 passes and becomes ordinance 8518. Bill Number 9498. I'll move for a second read, second by Mr. Shuldoff, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 405, the zoning code, to allow for medical marijuana-related uses.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill Number 9498 passes and becomes ordinance 8519. Bill Number 9500. Ms. Pagano moves for a second read, second by Mr. Jones, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance amending Chapter 213, nuisances, section... By deleting Section 213, 1010, nuisances affecting health subsection A16, and amending Section 213, 040, enforcement to allow for the protection of a victim of an incident.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third read, second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance amending Chapter 213, nuisances, by deleting Section 213, 010, nuisances affecting health subsection A16, and amending Section 213, 040, enforcement to allow for the protection of a victim of an incident.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill Number 9500 passes and becomes ordinance 8520. Bill Number 9501. Councilwoman Pagano moves for a second read, second by myself, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance amending Article 17, residential rental real estate.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third read, second by Mr. Pagano, or Mr. Hinky. Joe's here. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Can't be all serious. Ordinance amending Article 17, residential rental real estate.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this matter?
John Englemyer, 1281 Graham Road, Florissant. I don't mean to be confrontational, but informational on this particular bill, and I'm gonna go by line items now. On line 27, "This program will collect current and accurate information identifying existing rental owners. Information shall be used by the police department and the Department of Public Works to perform their respective duties." What are the respective duties? Man, line 27.
Ms. Pagano?
The follow-up with that same question is line 33, and it says here, or line 32, and carries over to 33, "An incident has been as a victim of a crime." Can we use "incident" rather than "crime" for the word? Crime is sort of abrasive, in my opinion, as a landlord, as a resident of Florissant. Crime is one of those words you don't like to hear so often. As I turn to the next page, on line 33, page 2, "No person shall permit occupancy or offer for rent or lease without a residential license issued pursuant to this article. A mere intent is not necessarily a... an offer." Again, mere suspicion is not a reason for arrest, I believe, is the terms. It's just a matter of clarification, not confrontation, once again. On line 43, on page 2, it says here, "On forms prescribed, thereby a declaration setting forth the name, street address, telephone number, and a copy of the identification of the owner of record." Could there be a sample of the form that is supposed to be used, be attached to this bill for clarification or understanding of what is required? Oh my God, I just got shocked, I gotta slow down. I just got shocked.
Get him a chair, please.
Oh my God, I gotta slow down. I gotta slow down. I'm okay. I just got shocked.
What's up, John?
I just got shocked.
You all right? You wanna help?
Oh my God.
What'd you get shocked at?
The microphone.
My defibrillator just...
Oh, goodness.
Just hit me, oh my God. I gotta slow down.
Go ahead and sit down, you can take the microphone.
We'll give you the mic while you're sitting down.
Oh my God.
Just go ahead and sit down.
Please, no, I'm...
You sure, John, I was doing comfortable if someone came checking you out.
I'm okay.
Let's have a seat.
I'm getting myself too tight.
Get your right behind you.
Chair is right there. You ready to go?
Yes. Sorry about that, John, no worries. Oh my God. Oh, no, man, no. I just had to slow myself down, I'm getting too... Oh, pardon me.
You're good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, pardon me.
Let me get to my seat.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Jackie, thank you, Robert. Thank you, Joe. All right, it is a little bit too...
Excuse me, Andy.
Whew.
John?
Let's call it, you're in.
I'm gonna have to take a shot at this point.
Yep, 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 no, John. We're gonna have to check your ID.
Oh my God. Oh my God. Oh my God.
I'll make a motion, recess for ten minutes, second by Mr. Hinky, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
I'm good, I really am good.
No, you're not.
Yeah. Yeah, make your motion.
All right, we're getting ready though.
Are you ready? Are you ready to proceed? Do you want to go ahead without them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Get ready. Here we go. Five, four, three, two.
Thank you. We're back now after that little, little episode with Mr. Engelmeier. Hopefully, everything is okay and let's all keep, keep our prayers in with, with Mr. Engelmeier. I'm going to make a motion that we continue Bill Number 9501 because Mr. Engelmeier has some more stuff to, to talk on. And he was unable to speak, so I will, I will continue that too. Second by Mr. Hinky. We will continue this bill till July eighth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Bill Number 9502. I'll move for a second reading, second by Mr. Shuldorff. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Ayes have it.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for improvements to Route I-270 North.
Mr. Hinky moved for a third reading, second by myself. All in favor? Aye. All oppose? Ayes have it.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for improvements to Route I-270 North.
For the final votes taken, does anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing done. Quick, please pull the council. Here they come.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Okay. Parsons?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Bill Number 9502 passes and becomes ordinance 8521. Bill Number 9503. I'll move for a second read, second by Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All against? Ayes have it.
An ordinance authorizing supplemental reappropriations of fiscal year 2018 outstanding purchase orders in various funds.
Councilman Hinky moves for a third read, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor? Aye. All oppose?
An ordinance authorizing supplemental reappropriations of fiscal year 2018 outstanding purchase orders in various funds.
For the final votes taken, does anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Robert Nice got their dog going on there, huh? Your wife's going to bring, you bring that dog home.
Robert Smith, 2823 Chapelview. Question for re-appropriating these funds. I guess I'd, I'd like to understand why now. Where, where were these, why wasn't this done at the budget session?
Yes, I'd like to suspend the rules. Kimberly? We have our finance directors coming up.
Good evening.
Thank you, Kim.
So what happened is during the budget sessions last year, we discussed changing the financial statements so that they are not, so that the purchase orders from prior years no longer are automatically being able to be spent in subsequent years. So what we had was, we'd be reviewing the financials and there would be, in the current year, expenses for prior year appropriations, maybe FY '16 or '17, and it was very difficult to see what was truly the current year. So this is a very old way of doing things. I've talked to the auditor and no, no other city is doing it this way. And they also advised that if we could change that, that would be good because there are two statements that are produced during the audit. One is the, the purchase order, the way it's, it was set up, and then gap. So in changing that, we had to change, we had to make sure that all the POs for '18 were completed as much as possible through December. We went through it. It was a very laborious process to review each of the purchase orders and try to make sure that whatever we were carrying over was just basically project-related. If it was supplies, it should be already budgeted for the new year. So this took us into January and also the audit was going on in January. We have a new, everyone in the finance department is new to their positions. So it, and we had, the business license person had retired. So we were just very inundated with things at that time. So I was able to get, get the information together once we got the audit completed and made sure that everything was in line.
So the, the line items for these particular, don't go back into the general fund if they aren't used? Is that correct?
Let me explain that.
Because that's where I don't understand why these numbers.
So what happens during the audit is that typically what was happening is you have your fund balance for your different funds. So say, general funds, that fund balance then is reduced by your outstanding purchase orders at the end of the year and by your subsequent year's budget. So now what's happened is that process still stays the same within the audit. It's just that the financial statements are no longer showing it that way. So in order for the POs to roll over into the next year, they actually have to be re-appropriated, although they were already appropriated in '18. But as you'll see, when you see the audit, which will be coming out shortly, you'll see that those funds were not used.
Right. I, I understand. I'm just looking at, I guess, the numbers. I'm following the, the numbers. I wasn't able to follow the numbers. I went back and looked and yet I see all of the appropriate, I guess, encumbrant numbers and the open POs. So all of these represent the open POs, but they're not going back to the general. They are just being transferred over to 2019 budget numbers. And it took this amount of time to get this put together. Okay. And as you say, everybody's new, so that the audit will be completed for '18. This, from time to time.
I have, I have the audit. The audit's complete. It's been reviewed and I'm working on the narrative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Quick, please pull the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky? Pagano? Parsons?
Yes.
Syam? Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill Number 9503 passes and becomes ordinance 8522. Next item is new business, board appointments. Seeing none. Next item is requests. Councilman Parsons moves to approve a full liquor license by drink for Jimmy Nails LLC located at 12757 New Halls Ferry Road. Second by Mr. Egan. Mr. Parsons?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a moment. I would just like the, Mr. Pham, who's the owner of Jimmy Nails, to come forward because we need to make a small correction on this application.
Second by Mr. Shuldorff. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Pham?
Meta Farm, 3520 Santiago Drive. And this is my father, Floyd Farm, 3520 Santiago Drive.
Okay. Thank you for coming up, Mr. Pham, and I appreciate your, your business here in the city of Florissant. We did have a, a small discussion in regards to your application for the liquor license. You, and on this application, it states that you're asking for a full liquor by the drink license, but that is not really your intent. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
You're really just wanting to serve wine, beer, and champagne, and that's about it at your establishment. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So at, at this point, are you wanting to make the change from your request being for full liquor by the drink to just malt liquor, which is beer and wine by the drink?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's all the questions that I have. Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay. To make a motion to amend the application to limit it to beer and wine?
Ms. Parsons? Thank you.
I want to make that motion, but I know you seconded it, right?
Mr. Hinky?
Well, the motion's on the floor, but I have a further question. I don't have a problem with that, but maybe we can finish the motion and then I'll ask my question on the Sunday. Or should I?
Oh, the motion?
Yeah.
Yes, we have a motion to amend it, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye. All oppose? Ayes have it. Now, Mr. Hinky.
Yeah, my, my question was, also in this application is for a Sunday liquor license. This is a nail shop, I'm assuming here. You're going to be opening and have drinks in there on Sundays also?
Possibly.
Are you guys, are you open on Sunday now?
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned about that, but that, okay, you answered my question. So you are, you do want to have this, this malt liquor and wine by the drink license also for Sunday?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hinky. Roll call, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
No.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky?
No.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Motion passes.
Request approved, correct?
Yes.
Request approved. Next item is bills for a first reading. Number 9504.
Ordinance to authorize amendment to B5 ordinance number 6669 is amended to allow for a new clothing store with exterior changes for the property located at 13995 New Halls Ferry Road.
Bill Number 9505.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Gateway Disposal LLC for the, for the assignment and, and assumption of exclusive waste collection services for the city of Florissant.
City Council moves for a second read, a second by the city council. It was due to enter.
First time I've heard of it. Why not?
He needs one. We need names.
Second, I, make a motion for a second read by Ms. Pagano, second by Mr. Egan. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Mr. Egan?
Be brief. Thank you very much. And I might repeat a little bit of what Mr. Hustle said, but I think this is very, very important. I'd like everyone to know that for me personally, the decision to reassign the Meridian trash contact, contract was a very difficult decision. I personally, this council, the previous mayor, the current mayor, city staff, and the city attorney worked very, very hard to maintain this relationship. I, we had a series of meetings and correspondences. I personally visited a facility in effort to understand their operations and the processes that they were putting in place to maintain and improve services in the city of Florissant. Throughout this process, we continued to give them grace as they went through a series of personnel and management changes. Each time they would wheel out a new contact person, only to have that contact person changed shortly thereafter. Meridian even attempted to bring back former employees familiar with the Florissant operation, and they did not last long. One of their management team, as was referred to earlier this evening, was, attended a city council meeting in December and was brought to task by Mr. Syam and others on, on the council at that meeting. I personally was very vocal, me being one correspondence, a bit too vocal with Meridian. The final straw for me was when it became apparent that they were treating our citizens that called in to complain about their service poorly. And I use the term poorly very loosely. There are more appropriate terms that are too vulgar for this proceeding. I could not stand silent while my residents, who were compelled to use this service, were treated and forgiven upon like garbage. It became apparent that Meridian had no intention of honoring the terms of this contract. I recall monitoring a West County Facebook page where Meridian was going to have a special Sunday pickup in several ballroom areas as the trash piled up in Ward Three. That was the straw that broke this camel's back. Couple points. The timing of this contract reassignment was critical, as previously mentioned. Meridian announcing this reassignment too early was my fear in that they would pick up their toys and leave us with a mound of unpiled trash. I myself paid my forthcoming bill and am waiting a refund, as many of our residents are. Several haulers were contacted and given a list of criteria to meet in order to qualify for the reassignment of this contract. In fact, the group that was up here earlier, it's my understanding, they were also contacted. Their attorney was in fact contacted. We asked for secrecy in these negotiations, and I will continue to guarantee the secrecy on my part that I promised back. Only one hauler, Gateway, was able to meet our demands. I personally broached Mr. Hustle's relationship with Gateway at executive session, and I am satisfied with the response he provided. And he expounded upon that this evening, not only in our executive session, but for all the citizens. And again, I am very satisfied with this explanation. Regarding Mr. Barkum, he has a proven track record with the city of Florissant. He is personably accountable. I have emailed him in the past and have always had my citizens' issues immediately addressed. There will be some growing pains in this transition. However, with Gateway, there is light at the end of the tunnel, and that light is a constant and professional waste hauling at a very good price. With Meridian, there was also light at the end of the tunnel. However, that light was a freight train heading right at us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Yes, when, um, with Meridian, I know myself, Mr. Jones, we have had several meetings with Meridian. They've came in on several different occasions. Oh, this contact, this guy will clean up the city. He'll get everything taken care of. A week later, we get another contact. Same thing. We're coming in to clean it up. We will take care of this problem. That didn't work. Another person will come in. We have more contacts from Meridian on my phone than I have on anything. And they're all different people, and each one, each one of them persons was going to take care of the city and get this city cleaned up and get this mess with Meridian cleaned up. And it never happened. So this is the last resort. We came down to doing this, and I feel this is the right decision. I feel the city council feels the same way. This is a unanimous decision, a council as whole. We have done our homework on here. This has been a mess for several years now, and I think this is the right thing we're doing for the city. And I believe that the residents will be happy with this, with this change. Like Mr. Egan said, there will be some bugs in transition. That's everything we, we do in a transition is going to be some bugs. But I think we, them will be very smooth. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Ayes have it.
Ordinance to authorize amendment to B5, nope, wrong one. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Gateway Disposal LLC for the assignment and assumption of exclusive waste collection services for the city of Florissant.
I'm sorry. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd just like to make, uh, it is good to see, uh, one of our city residents, Lance, out in the audience tonight. I guess he'll be one of our go-to guys, and he is a Florissant resident, which that makes me feel real well. And it was great, too, to sit down and work through this problem with our new mayor. Our mayor has stood up for us and, uh, said this is what we need to do, and we all agreed, and we have pushed on. So, hopefully, everything works out for the residents. Uh, we're looking out for you. We don't forget what we worked for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Gateway Disposal LLC for the assignment and assumption of exclusive waste collection services for the city of Florissant.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill?
Kevin O'Donnell, five-twelve Rancho Lane. First of all, we, ever since we've had Meridian, when we first got him, I was against having a single hauler. But you know what? I've never had a single problem with them. Not a single problem. You know, I complain a lot. You all know I complain a lot. Okay? So, first thing I want to say is, we start having trouble with these, this trash hauler, Meridian, for over three years now. Okay? Three years ago, Meridian's original owner had sold the company to a national group, national conglomerate. He continued to stay on as the manager. I don't know if he's here this evening or not. I have nothing against him. This isn't about him. But this, but this is about people of Florissant. I don't know, I've never, I've talked to the neighbors in my neighborhood that walk their dogs, that walk the sidewalks. I asked if they had problems with Meridian. None. We didn't have any. Even with the snow, we didn't get pickup during the snowstorms. They got it the next day. They, I found out that when I had surgery, and I was unable to walk and still am having difficulties, I was told by Meridian, when I talked to them on the phone, which was simple, I record every phone call I make to them. They told me that, no matter what, Mr. O'Donnell, we will set, we will just leave your trash up at the front of the house, and we will wheel the cart down for you, dump the trash, and wheel the cart back up. Does this sound like a company that's not doing their job? And this, and I just, I had, I was out of commission for, I don't know, months last year because of the kidney failure and stuff. But I just, I don't understand how, first of all, Mr. Barkum was also the manager of, of the new Meridian that sold out when people were complaining, because I spoke with him. And he, I said that I talked to, at the time, that was Jody, and she's the one I can remember the name on. And she, I think she retired when they, when they changed. But there were people complaining, and I, and I found out from many times, just by watching, I even did it. We didn't have our trash all set up by six a.m. in the morning. Our trash pickups were different times of the day. Is that, is that our fault? Our mail delivery, it didn't come until six o'clock or six-thirty this afternoon or this evening. Is that my fault? Is that, is that the postal, post office fault? Are we gonna hi- hire somebody else now? FedEx? You know? So, I mean, what I'm getting at is, the problem persisted even with Mr. Barkum in charge. And then they fired him last year, as I recall. I believe it was last year they fired him. And they put him in char, they, that's when he decided he was gonna probably start his own business again. Okay? November last year, he decided they were gonna redo, they were, he was gonna start this business up. I looked for a website. I did a search on Google. I did a search on other, uh, other sites, trying to find this Gateway Disposal LLC. Couldn't find anything. Found Gateway Medical, uh, out there in West County, but there's no, no listing for him. As I understand, the phone will not even be up and going until tomorrow. Is this correct? I mean, that's what I heard on Facebook. And to me, it looks like we're gonna have the, a similar situation. I don't know why people in certain areas got bad, poor service. I never did. Never have. I was even in the hospital June fourth, when the first bill came for the, for the quarter last year, and they didn't stop picking my trash up, that my neighbor was putting out for me. Now, I, I asked them about it. I called them in August. I said, oh, my God, did I forget to pay the bill? They said, yeah, you're, you're one, you're one quarter behind. I took care of it. They still picked up my trash. So, I don't see what the big deal is, but the big problem is about this. I've never had any problems with Meridian whatsoever. And I've talked to many, many people, and there's testimonies on Facebook, and maybe somebody's just got something against a company, the company itself. But what's gonna happen in five years? Is Gateway Disposal LLC gonna get, build up their customer base again like they did with Meridian, when, when we first took them? And then they'll sell off? Then what do we do? You know, this, this to me is, you know, fool me once, okay, fool me twice. No, it's not, it's not right. So, what I would like to see is, first of all, we were given two weeks' notice. And just like Mr. Egan said, I paid my bill June second. I had to look up my bill, uh, bill online because I, I didn't even get the statement yet. And I, and I paid it, just so I wouldn't forget. And, uh, the fifteenth was the cutoff date, which was last Saturday. Two days later, I got this message from, I'm signed up for the press releases from the city hall, and I was told that they're, they're terminating Meridian. And I thought, well, if they had these, all these problems for three, four years, why didn't they do it before? Uh, was it Mayor Schneider that didn't want them to terminate it? I don't understand. I really don't. To me, it looks like we need more transparency in this, in this city. You know? There's no interruption of service, but I don't even know where to send my bill. I don't even, I mean, they're gonna, Meridian's gonna mail, gonna give me credit back for my check, for my bill, July, after July first, in maybe a few weeks. But who do, who do we send the money to? So, while this money's in limbo, we're gonna pay Gateway. We're not? You mean, you mean to tell? I, I, I read the press releases, and they said that, that, that we were...
Ms. Pagano?
I know you were, you were late getting here.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Hustle, for about a half hour, uh, during the public hearings, talked about Meridian, how this came about, uh, with Mr. Barkum. I'm gonna say that you are one of the lucky ones that didn't have a problem. I personally was one of the lucky ones who didn't have a problem. But I do have a lot of residents who did have problems, and the other side of the city, it was, it was horrible. And, and we have documents showing and, and complaints and dates of, of people who've complained. And we did work with Meridian. We tried. We gave them the best. If you were here, they were at many, uh, work sessions, public hearings, before meetings. We tried to work with them. It didn't happen. As far as Mr. Barkum, I don't know what, you have a chance, but he came in with his company. He's taking over a contract that has, that doesn't expire for a year.
No.
At that rate, no. Give me a minute. Give me a minute.
April.
Give me.
Okay.
All right? I gave you your time. You give me mine.
Okay.
In two thousand and twenty, that expires, and then we can go for additional year or two years on that contract, at the same rate, at the same rate that we are now. Now, I'm going to tell you that when we went out for the bid, which had to be confidential, all right? It had to be confidential. Everyone kept their mouth shut. They all came back that they couldn't do it by July first, and your prices were gonna go up, because they could not do that. So, as, as far as Facebook goes, and all, now everybody coming claiming that Meridian, who's been on the news, I don't know how many times, um, you know, with not-good reviews, has an F by the BBB. Why all of a sudden, they're heroes and, and we're defending them? Um, I just, I just, I really, I'm, I'm having a problem with this and with Facebook, 'cause if you were to look back on Facebook and all the problems that occurred. So, I mean, I think we're ready to vote. We did what we felt was the best for this city, and I'm sure if they were to raise the prices, especially the senior price, Facebook would have blown up and probably, yes, had everyone. So, that's it, but I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Well, 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 April, April is the deadline, or that's the deadline supposedly, for the new, it's not a year. This is, this is June.
Two thousand and twenty.
Okay, Kev, that, question, Kev.
With extension. But you can get the minutes, and, and I'm sure that what Mr. Hustle said, detailing all the details, will be in the minutes, and you can get dates. And as far as you making the payment, you do not have to pay Gateway until you have received the, received the refund from Meridian, which should be on July first. They should be working it out to get you your refund.
And another thing I'd like to know. I've, I've, somebody had posted something from the state of Missouri with Mr. Hustle being involved with this LLC.
Mr. Hustle has already...
I, I know, I know. I didn't come here because I didn't know that everything was gonna get bumped up.
It didn't get bumped up. We thought that...
It wasn't on the agenda?
Well, Kevin, it, it was to, we suspended the rules. Had you have been here on time, you would have seen it. The meeting will be telecast, as, as you know. I mean, you can go, and, um, Ms. Goodwin takes great minutes. So, everything that Mr. Hustle said, and it was very well done. It was about a half hour long, will answer all your questions. And if you have a question after that, you go ahead and call me.
Do what?
I said, then you can go ahead and call me if you have a question.
Okay. Well, you're not, you're, um...
I don't, I, I don't, you know, Kev, I've always said it. It, it doesn't matter if, if you're Ward Seven or Ward Two. I can answer your question.
Right. Well, some, some people don't feel that way. Some people, some people feel...
Okay, Kev, we're, we're getting off subject, Kev. What's your question, Kev? What's the question?
My question is, when I had confronted Mr. Hustle before about doing something, about representing the residents of Florissant, he told me, and he told Mr. Engelmeier, that he is not the, the city, he's not the attorney for the residents of Florissant. He's the attorney for the mayor of Florissant.
No, that is not, he is a...
That is absolutely not true, Kev.
Okay.
This is getting, yes.
Yes.
This has nothing to do, Kevin, this has nothing to do with this bill that you just asked that last question. Has nothing to do with it.
It's collusion.
Okay, Kev.
Well, well, wait a minute. You Democrats, you Democrats always pull this, pull this collusion stuff up.
Kev, would you call for the question? What's your question, please?
I s, I said, I think there's collusion here.
That's not a question. That's an opinion. What is your question?
My question is, how was Mr. Hustle able to work with, uh, Gateway to get them started, and then work with the city to, to hire them?
Mr. Hustle explained himself...
I should have been around time. It should have been on the agenda.
Oh, my God.
It, it wouldn't matter. I just, I think we need to...
You, this city, this council is full of non-transparency. That's all I have to say.
There's a motion to call for the vote.
You got other people that wanna speak?
Excuse me. We got somebody else. Mr. Adams? Come up to speak on the final vote?
Yes. My family, my family has lived in Florissant for forty-five years. I remember when we had Zykin. I remember when Zykin sold out to somebody, and they ran Zykin's business down. Zykin turned around, bought it back from them. I remember when Zykin got rid of one of their drivers, and their driver started their own business. I remember all this. I remember we used to have several different trash companies here in Florissant. I had Meridian before Florissant had Meridian. I was happy when, I was elated, my wife and I were elated, to find out Meridian was gonna be our trash hauler. I never had no problems with Meridian until this spring. I called them. I said, you didn't get our trash. The whole street was missed. We'll send somebody out. The next day, you missed our street. We'll send somebody out. Meridian's downfall was, they never responded in a timely manner. I'm very sorry to see Meridian go. I'm very happy that all of yous, including you, Mr. Mayor, took the aggressive, or proactive, not aggressive, the proactive action to terminate this, when Mayor Schneider kept kicking us down the road for over two years. He wouldn't do nothing about it. You guys are all to be commended for what you have done. All of yous, because Meridian, I do not see them ever straighten, and I cannot figure out what the problem is with Meridian, but there is a problem. So, they need to be tossed out. And as far as the attorney, he explained everything thoroughly, where even I could understand it, as to, as to what his position was in this whole matter. So, there was no collusion. There was no cover-up. There was no hanky-panky. There was no money under the table, no baseball tickets, no football tickets. There was nothing. I appreciate what you guys have done for the city of Florissant. Thank you again so much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Hinky?
Yeah, I call for the...
Oh, we're, we're coming up, we're coming up.
Hello, Mr. Barkum? How you doing? My name's Chuck Barkum. I live at one-one-zero-seven-two Stonebridge Lane, Wunspo, Missouri. Um, I am the managing member of Gateway, and I'll get a little emotional, guys, so please forgive me on this. Thank you for the opportunity. We're ready to go, and we'll take care of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Quick, please, poll the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number nine-five-zero-five passes and becomes ordinance eight-five-two-three. Bill number nine-five-zero-six.
Ordinance amending section one-two-five-zero-six-five-A, job classification and grade level by changing certain job classifications.
Bill number nine-five-zero-seven.
Ordinance amending revenue account number zero-one-four-three-five-zero-one-zero, grant reimbursement revenue in the amount of three hundred and six thousand dollars and appropriating the sum of two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars from general revenue fund to various budget accounts to cover six additional police officers.
Ms. Pagano moves for a second read, second by Mr. Shuldoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Ordinance amending revenue account number zero-one-four-three-five-zero-one-zero, grant reimbursement revenue in the amount of three hundred and six thousand dollars and appropriating the sum of two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars from general revenue fund to various budget accounts to cover six additional police officers.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Hinky. Roll call, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance amending revenue account number zero-one-four, three-five, one-zero, zero-one-zero. Can't talk anymore. Grant reimbursement revenue in the amount of three hundred and six thousand dollars and appropriating the sum of two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars from general revenue fund to various budget accounts to cover six additional police officers.
Before the final votes take, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter?
Robert Smith, two-eight-two-three, Chapelview. Uh, I have two questions. First question, I understand that Ferguson, Florissant, um, school district is contributing to three hundred and six thousand dollars for these six... to $306,000 for these six officers. And that is a, is that a one-time, or is that going to be an ongoing, as long as those officers are there?
Mayor?
So in order for us to enter into this agreement, it's a five-year commitment from the school district, so that's going to be continuing. They're gonna pay 75% of the salary for, for five years. After year four, um, they have to notify us that they, they will go to year five, but then they're gonna end the contract at that point.
And then they don't, no longer have to pay, we would then, they would just be on Florissant to take care of those-
That's correct. And honestly, we would probably eliminate those positions at that time through attrition.
Okay. Second, is, under the salaries and benefits for these six officers, the money for the six officers is not coming from the prop P money, it's coming out of general budget of, for the city. Is that correct?
That I, it is, it is coming out of prop P.
You're only saying yes.
Oh, it's coming out of general, not prop P.
General fund.
Okay. And why is it not coming out of the prop P funds for the six new officers?
Can't believe it would be safe to say that the, the prop P money has been, uh, already delegated to something else?
Yes, and also it would be difficult for every person to work that out. It wouldn't be a feasible way to do it.
So it wouldn't be a feasible way for us to pay for the officers through prop P money? That's, I'm trying to understand what, what, what she means by that.
Who's out there? It's trash. Todd, you gotta leave that door open.
Robert, at this point, I think I can answer this, that we're going to take it out of general revenue and a budget, the, that budget, uh, 2020, we'll look at, see if we can't take it out of, uh, prop P funds.
Okay.
Just initially, we're taking it out of general.
So, but we are hiring six, these are gonna be permanent police officers for the city of Florissant?
Well, 75, 75% of the time, they'll be spent, uh, Ferguson, Florissant School District has SROs, and the other 25% of the time, they'll be, uh, with the city of Florissant, yes, police.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, we'll have six more people on the street within a few months when they're not at school.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Egan?
Yeah, I think that this is a tremendous opportunity for the citizens of Florissant. When those officers leave their assignment in May or early June from the high school, it gives us the opportunity to use them during what is historically the, the peak season for law enforcement during the summer season. We have officers who will be taking vacation, and they can augment that. And when they're not taking vacation, they'll be on our streets, putting more extra bodies on the street where we need them during the hot dog days of summer.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Craig, please poll the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Bill number 9507 passes and becomes ordinance 8524. Bill number 9508.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $15,000 from account number 015, um, sorry, 3610000. Salaries and benefits IT to account number 0157010000. Salaries and benefits, uh, media to cover additional salary expense for the IT and media director.
Bill number 9509.
Ordinance amending chapter 320, speed regulations by adding a new section 320090, keep kids alive, drive 25, special enforcement areas.
I'll make a motion, we, for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Ordinance amending chapter 320, speed regulations by adding a new section 320090, keep kids alive, drive 25, special enforcement areas.
I'll make a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Syam. Roll call, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano? He was out of here. Parsons?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number-
Ordinance, wait a minute. Ordinance amending chapter 320, speed regulations by adding a new section 320090, keep kids alive, drive 25, special enforcement areas.
For the final votes taken, is anyone in the yard who'd like to speak on this bill? Seen done. Craig, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Bill number 9509 passes and becomes ordinance 8525.
Yes. Oh, that's kind of interesting, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Keep kids alive, drive 25. Next slide, Ms. Council announcements. Mr. Hinky?
Yes, uh, this Wednesday, coming Wednesday is, uh, uh, the June Wednesday night out, once again, right down the street here on St. Francis. It's at Cordyce, isn't it, Mayor?
Yes.
And it's the hat night?
Hat night.
The hat night this Wednesday, uh, Wednesday night out, it's always a good time. Come on out and enjoy Old Town Florissant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinky. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just having this, this feeling of, of thankfulness for the city staff and all the hard work that they're doing, um, I guess this comes up for me because it's a slower season for me with my job, and so I get around to different, uh, services that the, that the city offers, and, uh, parks and rec, uh, going with the family to the pool, things like that, just seeing how well things are working. I just feel thankful for that. So I wanna thank all, all the, uh, city staff for all the work that you're doing. Also, I wanna thank the residents and the city staff who attended the blood drive last week, the Cardinals' blood drive that was at, uh, Egan Center. When I was there, I talked to, uh, a supervisor there, and I said, "How's it going?" She said, "It's great." She says, "Things are going well. We have a lot of, a lot of donors." Uh, so I, I'm just getting the sense of how important that is to the community and the, uh, the hospitals to have that, those available to patients, and so thank you for doing that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Egan?
Mr. President, I'm going to steal your thunder this evening. You always speak about the firearms in the car. Both the firearms that were used in these events that I talked about earlier were illegally obtained weapons. So I'll let you talk about that at your normal slot, but what you're saying, I hope, is taken to heart by the people in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mr. Jones?
Yep, I'd like to give a shout-out to team, our food pantry up the street. They're always looking for canned goods and money, uh, morning, noon, and night, there's always somebody hungry. So please keep that in mind. Another thing I'd like to give a big shout-out to is that, I don't do this too often, is to the Hazelwood, uh, city council on the Mills Mall, the St. Louis Outlet Mall. It looks like that sports complex is gonna be here, uh, and that's gonna be a big thing for St. Louis County, uh, especially up north here, so shout-out to those guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yes, um, like Mr. Mr. Egan said about the firearms, you know, anybody that follows these meetings on a regular basis, know I say this every council meeting about firearms, making sure you have them locked up and secure. And this is a perfect example. They were, they were obtained illegally, most likely they were stolen, and look at the results that we have. We have an officer that's dead and another one that was, that's injured. And, and you have to lock your firearms up. Do not leave them in your car unsecured. I mean, everywhere in, in the St. Louis metropolitan area, this is happening. Not just in Florissant, it's happening everywhere. Make sure you lock your firearms up. If you can't be a responsible firearm owner, you shouldn't own one. Make sure you join your Neighborhood Watch program. We have a very good program in, in the city. Get ahold of, um, on the city website, you can join up Neighborhood Watch. Thank you. Mayor?
First, I just wanna say thanks to John Hassle for all the work that you did with this Meridian contract and, uh, Gateway, and it, it really needed to be done, guys. Um, it was definitely a problem. Um, we wanted to do two things, improve the service and keep the cost the same to our residents. John, I appreciate your work, and I appreciate the work of the city council also on this, and their commitment to doing what's best for the city of Florissant. So thank you, guys.